Good evening. Can we have quiet in the chambers? If you, if anyone wants to speak, you're welcome to go outside, but we're starting our evening session of Glendale City Council meeting of June 5th, 2018. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Agajanian.
President.
Devine.
Here.
Carpe diem.
Joining.
Here.
Here's the note.
Here. Today's flag salute will be led by Councilmember Agajanian. Please remain standing for invocation by Reverend Charles Updike.
I pray to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Gracious God, Creator and giver of life, the source of all our strength and the hope of our tomorrows, we come and give thanks for the possibilities within our city. You have given us a council and a mayor that choose to work as colleagues in order to wade into the needs and concerns of our citizens. Move us beyond our gratitude to embrace actions that benefit fellow citizens. Give the council the gift of discernment and wisdom. Give the gifts of vision to those who lead in our city. Grant us courage to hear and understand the opinions of our neighbors. Grant us courage to pursue truth and justice. Set our ears to hear the cry of those who petition us. And grant at the end of our decisions that we may rest secure that we have given our best to help our beloved community. Thank you for this election day, for all who seek to serve through elected office. May the citizens of our community seek also to understand and vote their conscience. We are privileged to live in a democracy where we are granted this freedom. Lord, help us to be good citizens, seeking the well-being of all of our neighbors in order that we may be a people of hope, fulfillment, and destiny. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Updike, and great to have you back. What's next, Mr. Clerk?
The agenda for the June 5th, 2018, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on Friday, June 1st, 2018, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Three would be presentation and appointments, agenda preview for the meeting of Tuesday, June 12th, 2018.
Mr. Golanyan?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For June 12th, 2018, in the afternoon commencing at 3:00 PM, there'll be a Glendale Housing Authority meeting, but there are no reports to be submitted. Same day in the afternoon at 3:00 PM, there'll be a joint meeting of City Council and the Housing Authority, including two reports, two items. First one from Director of Community Services and Parks regarding CDBG additional funding, and the second one from Directors of Finance and Community Development regarding adoption of the 2018-19 Glendale Housing Authority budget with approval of professional services contracts and support of budget for the fiscal year. Again, in the same afternoon, starting at 3:00 PM, there'll be a special meeting of the Glendale City Council with one report from Director of Community Development regarding petition phase for the expansion and renewal of the Greater Downtown Glendale Community Benefit District. On that day in the evening, starting at 6:00 PM, there'll be a Glendale City Council meeting. We have several consent items. First, a report from Director of Community Services and Parks regarding extension of current purchase order with Four Winds Day Camp Incorporated. Next one, a report from General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding energy risk management policy, trading authority policy, and annual authority for the purchase or sale of energy services. Have a report from Director of Community Development regarding professional services agreement for contract plan check and inspection services, followed by a report from Director of Finance regarding unclaimed accounts payable and payroll checks, followed by a report from City Attorney regarding annual excess insurance policy renewals for fiscal year 2018-2019, followed by a report from Police Chief regarding professional services agreement with Dignity Health Doing Business as Glendale Memorial Hospital and Health Center for Medical Services for Police Department, Aristides, and Inmates, and the last consent item from Public Works regarding traffic signal installation and modifications at various locations. On the adoption of ordinances, there'll be an ordinance amending certain sections of the Glendale Municipal Code, 1995, relating to Glendale Water and Power, time of use, and adjustable electric rates and charges, and adding Glendale Municipal Code sections regarding standby electrical rates. Under action items, there'll be a report from Director of Finance regarding council-requested status update of revenue enhancements, followed by another report from Director of Finance regarding adoption of the city's 2018-2019 GAN appropriations limit, and another one from Director of Finance regarding annual Glendale Water and Power transfer. There'd be a report from Director of Finance, Public Works, and General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding fiscal year 2018-2019 budget adoption, including comprehensive citywide fee schedule, Water and Power's public benefit program plan, rates and charges for Glendale Water and Power Electric and Water Service, as well as wastewater rates. We have another report from Public Works regarding citywide maintenance and repair of elevators at various City of Glendale facilities, followed by a report from Director of Community Development regarding renaming of the two block sections of Maryland Avenue between Wilson Avenue and Harvard Street to Artach Avenue. Lastly, on the hearings, Director of Community Development regarding Appeal of Design Review Board's approval of DRB case located at 1849 Los Encinos Avenue, which will be continued to July 31st, 2018.
In other words, it's gonna be a very long meeting.
I'm sorry.
Right? Was this the longest agenda preview ever?
I think so. It felt like it, that's for sure.
Okay, thank you for that, Mr. Golanyan. Next item, please.
Mayor commendation for the Glendale Police Reserve Program 50th Anniversary.
All right. Who's gonna accept it? Good evening.
Good evening, Eric.
How are you?
Good.
Good. I'm gonna read the commendation into the record, and then maybe my colleague can say a few words? Okay? Or they won't.
Maybe, well, maybe more.
Okay. Very well. So, "This commendation is presented to Glendale Police Department Reserve Officer Programs for 50th Anniversary. In recognition of the 50th anniversary of the Glendale Police Department Reserve Officer Program, I truly commend your progress and the individual officer's passion, dedication, professionalism, and commitment during these past five decades of providing police services to Glendale residents. Your dedication as volunteer professional law enforcement officers significantly enhances the safety of our community. On behalf of the City of Glendale, I wish you continued success." Zara Sinanian, Mayor. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So now, do you wanna say something?
Are they all reserve officers? Are you all reserve officers? Thank you very much for your service. I have to tell you that when I was campaigning some four years ago, I think it was, and it was a Saturday afternoon, and people were complaining to me on Kenneth Road that the police were never there. And I was talking to one of the residents, and I looked up, and there was a reserve officer giving a ticket to a woman, and his, his assignment was stop sign violations. And I said, "I want you to come out here and take a look, please." I introduced the officer to the, to the resident, and she was very happy. So, thank you for your service to all of, I know there are more of you, correct?
Yes.
Yes, there are. How many, how many reserve officers are there?
Currently, I have 13.
13. Well, thank you so much for your service. Thank you.
Senator Jenney?
I also would like to echo my colleague's remarks, and thank you for your service to the City of Glendale. You have the same training that any of our full-time officers have, but you, you don't get paid very much, do you? For this. No, you get less than council members do, if I, if I understand correctly. So, it really shows that you're not in it for the money, you're in, you're in it to serve the community and keep Glendale the great, safe community that it is. And so, I applaud you and wish you many more years of success. I see the officer here has 40-some years plus, 40-plus, serving the city, so what a great example that you're setting for these younger whippersnappers who are just in the reserves. So, thank you very much. We do appreciate your work.
Senator Jenney?
Thank you very much for your service. Thank you very much. And the next one has, I guess, over 25 years of service? Thank you very much.
Yes, and thank you for your, for your service from all of us and from our residents, because our safety is one of the highlight features of our city. Our residents expect the level of safety that we provide, and you play a very important role in doing so. So, thank you very much, and I'm so sorry, so financially underappreciated, but I'm going to ask Councilmember Agajanian to present you with a commendation. Would you like to say a few words?
Well, on behalf of my colleagues and the officers that weren't able to make it tonight, we would like to thank the council for your support over the last five decades. It's, it's a two-way street. Not only do we get to serve the community, but without having the program, we wouldn't be here. And the reason that most of the people here are, like you said, it's not for the pay. It's, it's from the heart, and it's dedication to the community. So, we appreciate the, the recognition. We would like to make mention, while we have the podium, that we're actively recruiting more reserves. So, if you're interested, please call the Glendale Police Department. The requirements for a reserve are exactly the same as a full-time officer, but you kinda get to do this on your own time as a, as a volunteer.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're very appreciated, too. Thank you. And what do we have next, Mr. Clerk?
Mayor commendation for STAR Youth Group.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor Sinanian, and members of City Council. I am Sergeant Patrick McTotter, and I'm very proud and honored to be standing here before you as I present to you the STAR Students Training as Role Models Class of 2018. This is a longstanding program that we've had here in the city since 1995, and currently it's in collaboration with the Community Services and Parks and, and the Police Department. A little bit about the program. It's for kids, Glendale kids, ages nine through 14. It's an after-school program. It's all year-round, and one week, one session a week, and during this session, the kids and, and the staff, they work on homework. There are friendly physical fitness competitions. Well, most of the times, it's, it's friendly. I realize how competitive these kids could be. Playing dodgeball, I got pegged really quick. They're very competitive. And of course, they, there is always a lesson plan of very important topics pertaining to social media, the dangers of drugs, bullying, gang violence, et cetera. And it's capped off with a wonderful family-style meal that's, that's provided by our friends from the Glendale Association of Realtors. There is also once, once a month on the weekend, an all-day outing to very enriching venues, to museums, to parks, to campsites, and other enriching places. This is such a wonderful program, and there are many challenges that these kids and, and their folks face, and that we have a wonderful staff that, that really coach and mentor these kids. And today's a testament to that. They are graduating, and there's, there's strong evidence of their increase in their self-esteem, just a positive outlook on life, and, and increase in academic proficiency. As much as these kids evolve, I, I can tell you now that the staff here, the Parks and Officer Rebecca Jackson, they, they too, it is far more sweeter for them and more gratifying with what they give. And I'd like to recognize them, Community Service Park Supervisor Norma Maurer.
Good evening. Mayor and Council. Thank you.
Nancy Reyes, and, and Officer Rebecca Jackson. And I'd be very remiss if I didn't mention our, our friends from the Glendale Association of Realtors. They've been so instrumental in these outings and these, these dinners that they coordinate for us. Talin Bhagdasarian, who's, who couldn't be here today, but we have Ani Adaimi, who's here, Ali Hadashian, and Sidney Taylor and Margie Simkins. If we may, Officer Rebecca Jackson's gonna talk about the, the five kids that are graduating here today.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council members, for having us here today. Before I introduce each student, I just want to actually thank all of them, because they all have put hard work and dedication to be here today during their tenure in our program. I will not lie, we do require, we have, you know, strict rules, and we do require them to obey by all rules, so it is a little difficult sometimes. Sometimes, you know, the program gets a little hard for them, but you know what? They've put in a lot of hard work. Most of them have been here at least four years in our program, and so they deserve a lot of recognition for that. First, I would like to introduce Alejandra Ramirez. Are you, come on, come on up. So, Alejandra has been with us for a little over four years. She started when she was nine years old, and during, during her tenure in our program, she's maintained over a 3.0 GPA. She has been a very studious student, and I'm very proud of her for that. She continues to excel in her academics, and since joining STAR, I have noticed Alejandra become more confident in her athletic abilities. Don't be fooled by her petite stature, she's always knocking out the boys at dodgeball, and I've seen that all the time. Alejandra is good at everything she puts her mind to, and I know that as she moves on to high school, she's gonna be a, a good person. She's gonna continue to be someone that everyone looks up to. So, congratulations, Alejandra.
Congratulations.
Next, we have Jonathan Cruz. Jonathan has also been here a little over four years. He will also be starting next, ninth grade next year. He is also very studious, and has risen his GPA from last year's 3.33 to his current GPA of 3.64. He is always participating in our current events, and I like that Jonathan is never shy about giving his perspective on, on different events that we talk about in class. Usually, some of the kids are really shy, or they don't really wanna say much, but I always count on Jonathan to say something. When, when I asked him, "What is something he learned from being in STAR?", he said, "How to be a better example for others and for my brother." So, I'm very proud of him, and congratulations, Jonathan. Next, I would like to present Flor Silva. Flor has also been in our program for a little over four years. When she first started, I will say, I didn't know if Flor spoke or not, because she wouldn't say anything, but we soon after realized that she did speak, so we were happy to hear that. She was very quiet. However, now she has become one of our female leaders in the program. She is studious and has demonstrated that with her 3.8 GPA. She just graduated from Roosevelt Middle School and received an award for that. Another thing about Flor is she is very determined. She has received, while during her tenure in STAR, she has received perfect attendance every single year. And her mom, I, I spoke to her mom, and her mom told me, "You know what? Flor is the type of girl that nothing's gonna stop her from going to school." Her mom had told her a couple times, "Hey, maybe you should stay today," and Flor refused, and she was out the door before her mom knew it. So, she's very dedicated to school. She has goals to attend USC, and she said she would like to study law, which I'm really proud about, proud for. She wants to pursue a career in law enforcement, which really excites me, and I know that she can do it. I have no doubt that Flor can accomplish anything she puts her mind to, so I'm very proud of her, and congratulations. And next, we have Yaid Martinez. Come on up. Yaid will be attending Clark High School. He is currently our most senior member of the program, and he has also grown a great deal during his tenure at STAR. Not only this way, but other ways, too. He started, he was like this, this little. But Yaid is actually the kid that we all refer to as the smart kid. All of my kids are smart, but Yaid is especially smart. He's the one that everyone goes to when they have a question, and I will admit, that includes myself. They, all the kids know that I don't know everything, and they've learned that, because when I have a question, the first person I look to is Yaid, which is gonna be sad, 'cause I'm gonna have to rely more on the dictionary and Google when he's not there. But Yaid, I've been very, very proud of him. He's actually currently the president of our STAR Board, which we will be having to replace soon. One thing I will say, when Yaid first started STAR program, he struggled to do a push-up. And as much as I know, you know, he didn't like it, and it, it didn't make it easy that I pushed him to do another one, even after he couldn't do one, but I am happy to say that, to this day, he can do several push-ups now. And he's also one of the fastest runners in our program, which surprised me the other day when we did a challenge. So, I'm very proud of him, and I have no doubt that he will do very well in his future. And lastly, we have Ariana Martinez. Ariana also started the program a little over four years ago. I have clearly seen through experiences outside of our program, and as a result of STAR's intervention, that Ariana has become a stronger role model since she first started the program. Usually, when our, our students enter middle school, they get to that age where they think they're too cool for the program, and I expect it every time, but it takes a strong and determined student to actually stick through it and continue with our program, even through, throughout middle school. And Ariana did this. Throughout her three years and, well, two years, her two years in middle school, she stuck with the program, and as hard as it was, and as difficult it, it was for her to stay in the program, she toughed it out, and I'm very proud of her for that. So, I give her a lot of recognition, recognition for that, and I want to remind her that she has our support, as well as her family's. Her family, you know, was also there, you know, I would call them, meet with them, make sure that they knew what was going on, and their, their parents were, were there right away to meet with me. So, I'm very proud of not only Ariana, but her parents for giving her the support that she needed. And here she is today. You know, I, I, at that point, I told her, "Ariana, you have to decide whether you wanna stay in there. I'm gonna leave it up to you to decide whether you wanna stay." And she made the conscious decision to stay in the program, and she stuck it out for the remainder of the year, and she did a good job. I've noticed a change in attitude, and she's... I've noticed a change in attitude, and she's been doing great in school and in our program, and I'm very proud of her. I have no doubt, Ariana, that you will continue to do well. You've just got to put your mind, you know, you put in the hard work and set your mind to whatever it is you want to do. Okay? You know, I know Ariana will continue to be a good role model. She is, and the girls look up to her, so just continue that as you go into high school. And lastly, I would also like to recognize the parents, because it does take a lot of work from the parents. They do get a lot of phone calls from me. I expect, I have high expectations for the parents also. And they, you know, they put in all the work they need to, they make sure their students are, their kids are punctual and attend, and they make sure that their children obey by, you know, our rules also. So thank you to the parents for all of your support. We wouldn't be here without you. Thank you very much. Thank you for having us.
Thank you, gentlemen. Now, don't go away, don't go away. Thank you. You don't get off that easy. So thank you to everyone who's involved with the STAR program. It's a great program, and yet you have another year, years' worth of wonderful students that are moving on and will be very successful in the future, no doubt. I want to thank the parents and also congratulate them. You must be very proud, deservedly so. I'd like to congratulate Alejandra, Jonathan, Flor, Yaid, and Ariana. And I'm going to read one of these commendations into the record, and then we'll come down and give them to you in person. So these commendations are presented to, in this case, it's Alejandra Ramirez, 2018 STAR graduate, in recognition of your graduation from Students Training as Role Models STAR Youth Program. Your involvement is a testament to your values and commitment in achieving your goals. I commend your hard work, passion, and dedication in completing this successful program. On behalf of the city of Glendale, I applaud your efforts and wish you continued success in life. You want to say something, or you want to just go down and meet the, meet?
I also want to thank Officer Jackson, because it sounds like you really know these kids, you really are vested in this program.
You're very passionate about it.
Yes. And thank you so much for that.
All right, next item, please.
Next would be consent items, the following are routine, and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
We have a motion. I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
And we have the roll call, please. Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Carpetian?
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes, thank you. Next item.
Next item will be City Council and Staff comments.
Any council comments?
I'll go first. I just have one. We, you know, we had two weeks, and we all attended a lot of meaningful events, of course, with Memorial Day and a lot of other events, but I, there is something special that happened to one of the spouses of our council member, and that is, Councilmember Aran Najarian's wife received two Emmys for her newscast coverage of the Napa Fires and News Impact Series. So I just want to usurp, Councilman Najarian, and say, congratulations, Palmira, job well done.
Thank you, councilmember.
Yes.
I have just two items. Aram, if we could have the graphic. Next Thursday, June 14th, the San Fernando Valley COG will be holding a transportation summit in the community of New Hall, and it is entitled, "Setting Priorities and Advancing Goals." It starts at 9:00 AM. Well, actually, 8:30 is when the coffee rolls out, and it goes until about noon time. The great thing is, you can get to this conference entirely by MetroLink. If you take the MetroLink train in Glendale, it'll drop you off at the doorstep of this event. So anyone interested in transportation and hearing some of the experts discuss what's in the future and how we can achieve those goals, please feel free to attend. The admission is free, no charge, and there'll be many elected officials and transportation officials there that you can speak to or hear them speak. Thank you for that. The other item is, this weekend, thank you, thank you, Ms. Devine, for mentioning Palmira's award. The award ceremony was in the city of San Francisco. So as I spent my Sunday in San Francisco, I came across a wondrous event. The event was the renaming of a street in San Francisco. Not an entire street, but just a block. It was named for Tony Bennett. Of course, he has the song that he sings, "I Left My Heart," et cetera. Tony Bennett did not write the words to that song, and he did not write the music to that song, but the good residents of San Francisco felt comfortable renaming a section of Mason Street, which is one of the main streets in San Francisco downtown, to Tony Bennett Way, just one block. Let's keep that in mind as we discuss these issues in the future. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Najarian. And I also join and congratulate Palmira on these two Emmys. It's a wonderful achievement. Okay, Mr. Agajanian?
LA County had a massive printer failure, as you guys know, and therefore, everyone has been asked to use provisional ballot. Only an hour and a half has been left for the election today, but however, some voters in from Rosemont area and Verdugo Woodlands area, which they were calling me, texting me, some of them have been dropped from the voter rosters. So don't worry, just use provisional ballot, as then later, they will check it, whether you had the, just ask for provisional ballot, they will look at it, and then you can be considered as you wish to vote. So don't be disappointed, just go and vote. And we have only one hour and 20 minutes left. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so back to the congratulations to Palmira, please pass them on to her.
Thank you.
And, absolutely, well deserved. And I'll just mention two things. As my colleague indicated, today's voting day, it's still not too late for you to vote. It seems that the county has messed up so badly that it doesn't matter where you vote, so just vote provisionally. Just go across the street to the Glendale Police Department, there's a polling station there. Make sure you vote. That's the most important part. And as you vote provisionally, and if you have the right to vote, your votes will be counted, which is, again, the most important thing. This does kind of worry me about the move that we're hopefully making towards complying with CBRE and giving up our rights of conducting our own elections to the county, because this certainly doesn't fill me, or I don't think anyone else, with any confidence towards the way they conduct the elections. But let's see what happens. I do want to mention an event that was organized by the city of Glendale Community Development Department. Our employees put together, and I want to mention Darlene Sanchez and Jennifer McLean Piramodo. I got her, yep, her married last name, and I'm starting to get it. And also, of course, Phil Lanza-Fain for putting together the Glendale City Council's Executives in Innovation Roundtable, whereby we brought together the executives of many of the tech companies in Glendale, and had a nice sit-down lunch, and, most importantly, an exchange of ideas about where we are and which direction we want to move on, move in, and what the needs of the tech industry are, how they can help each other, and how we, as a city, can help catalyze the tech industry in Glendale and make it grow bigger and stronger. I think that was a great success. I want to thank Councilmember Apollo Devine for being there. I think she enjoyed it very much as well. And we already have the commitments for next year's event, and many more commitments for our Tech Week, which is coming up and will be held on September 15th. And that's all I have. We are going to move on to the public comments and events announcements, and we'll go with the three-minute portion of the comments first. And my first speaker is Jay Geisenheimer. I think I got that right. Did I get that right?
You did.
All right. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, staff. Jay Geisenheimer, 21-year Rancho resident and an equestrian, living with a horse in my backyard. After I spoke before you in April, Joanne Hedge and I received a phone call and met with Art Simonian, his partner, and Tom Bell. The meeting began with Tom Bell saying his property is termite-infested, stalls are too small, and he can't make money there. I immediately presented him with an all-cash, clean offer, closed in 10 days, no contingencies, and equestrian who wants to build a world-class equestrian facility. He refused to look at it. At least, we know he is not a suffering property owner and can afford to quietly wait for a zone change, maybe. We have here 3,500 signatures, and we are just beginning. And you know what all these people have in common? They are all equestrians with a vested interest in this block, either by boarding there, accessing the trails there, buying their hay, renting horses, and just hanging out. A zone change on this block would have a domino effect on the next barn, and that would begin the demise of the block. We have 2.5 acres in a city with thousands of acres. Why here? I am not going to tell you this 21-unit building will bring us traffic. That is our very special gift to the new homeowners. 19,000 cars every day going to and from Disney alone, plus general flow of traffic. Bumper-to-bumper traffic traveling 3 miles an hour on Riverside is our usual morning and evening flow. Our traffic is a disclosure the developer must have in escrow for all new homeowners. These 21 units will bring danger to us. It is a small lot, 36,000 square feet, and a very narrow lot, and he wants to put the driveway to 21 garages in Gress Inegres, along with a trail right next to each other on this narrow block. And there is no way to separate the two entities, therefore, putting in danger the close to 100 horses and their riders living in the section of Rancho where our mayor lives that come down Chavez, cross Riverside, and access the trails. This development will endanger Burbankians. If it doesn't fit, you must deny. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. We'd like to keep this moving as expeditiously as possible. So I assume when you said "our mayor," you were referring to Burbank's mayor?
Yes.
Okay, because, yeah, I don't live there.
(inaudible).
Okay. All right, thank you. Joanne Hedge, followed by Mayor Gable Luddy.
Warmest greetings, Mayor, City Council, staff, and audience. I'm Joanne Hedge, President, Glendale Rancho Neighborhood Association. Once in a while, neighborhoods are faced with threats to the very core of their history, character, lifestyle, and purpose. Such impacts include the bludgeon of incompatible, inappropriate, inaccurately defined, and wrongly motivated development. This concerns 1900 West Riverside Drive, site of the 80-year Silver Spur stables. Its owner, 11 years, Tom Bell, is in escrow pending a zoning change from commercial equestrian to multifamily residential that developer Art Simonian has applied for. Simonian serves on the design review board. If council awards the zone change, Simonian, Bell, and group will demolish the stables and build a three-story, 21-unit condo complex, compromising the status of adjacent commercial equestrian lots. It would vacate a 30-foot width of adjacent Allen Avenue, a long-used, busy rider access to 54 miles of Griffith Park bridle trails, and jeopardize the vendor, vet, visitor, and emergency vehicle use of that road. The pricey condo project would drive a stake in the heart of historic Riverside Rancho. For decades, equestrian residents have been served and served by this 5-1/2-acre site of equine businesses. The neighborly, interwoven relationship extends to riding communities throughout the basin, even. It supports a rare marriage of urban and semi-rural life centered on horses and on the Griffith Charitable Trust's recreation and open space mandate. Of all the horse communities in the U.S., only this one offers a unique lifestyle opportunity a mere nine miles from the core of one of the nation's largest cities, Los Angeles. Rancho is not anti-housing, nor against affordable housing or zoned for it. This subdivision, lacking a definition in city code, is neither. It's called a pilot project, but there is one in Studio City. Rancho is not Studio City. Our teams are investigating the developer's application in terms of criteria to deny the zoning change. We have support from Glendale Historical Society, Coordinating Council, LA Equine Advisory Committee, Equestrian Trails Incorporated, and fine retailers in that area, including Damore's. Rancho riders are families, professionals, property owners, entertainment industry, blue-collar, young people, retirees, and voters. Citywide public support grows as this moves through design review, planning commission, and then council. Nearly 3,000 have signed our online petition with more on paper. Visit savetherrancho.org, and I thank you for your consideration and time.
Can we avoid the whole clapping thing? We kind of don't do that, because it's disruptive and just prolongs things unnecessarily. Obviously, you're very enthused about this and very passionate. We understand that. Mayor Luddy, welcome.
Mayor Sinanian and members of the council, I'm glad to be here tonight. I'm here in my own time. We're not meeting.
Sure. How much time do you need?
I'm a resident of the Burbank Rancho, and I want you to know that there are things about the Rancho that you may not be aware of. It is a community that goes through three cities, Glendale, Los Angeles, and Burbank. It is woven together by the LA River and Griffith Park, and Griffith Park's wilderness, open space, recreational uses, and its Western heritage values. And I brought an exhibit tonight to show you the extent of the Rancho. It is more than 1900 Riverside Drive. Now, you may not be familiar with this area, but it is much bigger than most people realize. Here is the, this lighted area is the entirety of the Rancho, including Burbank and Glendale. This little black dot right here in the heart of the area is the Silver Spurs stable. All of the surrounding property are the commercial facilities, the feed stores, the recreational boarding stores, the riding places, and the blue areas are the commercial equestrian zones within the Glendale Rancho. We are neighbors, so the red is the boundary of Glendale itself, and the park is act- And the park is accessed over a bridge into 54 miles of riding trails in a wilderness area. The Rancho begins on the backside of Warner Brothers, and it goes all the way down to the Glendale Narrows. It is linked together by continuous paths and trails that are dedicated to equestrians and hikers under L.A. City's park ordinance. The Silver Spurs stables may look like a tiny corner of Glendale, but in fact, it is the heart and the context of this larger historical area. Now, I want to say something about Small Lot. You know that I implemented the Small Lot ordinance in Los Angeles and was responsible for approving the first pilot project, which shares no environmental density, zoning, or other characteristics with the proposal for a pilot project on the Silver Spur site. I'm very familiar with Small Lot. There are also some problems with the application itself. And I brought an example of it to show you that the application, the developer, in his site plan shows multifamily over here, multifamily here, and then he shows commercial here, equestrian, the City of Glendale, the City of L.A. But in fact, councilmembers, across the street from Silver Spur is a commercial building. The larger area shows you all the horsekeeping areas. So if you take a closer look at this, you'll understand that what's been selected is a very tiny view of what's actually in the neighborhoods surrounding this property. Finally, I'd like to say that, for those who are here today, if you are opposed to this project, would you kindly stand up? Thank you.
Thank you. Come on, come on. Thank you. Sherri Robinson, followed by Harold Parker.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council and staff. My name is Sherri Robinson, and I'm a Glendale Rancho Neighborhood Associate member. I have lived in my home since 1962. We've always had a horse or two in our backyard and love the riding lifestyle. It is why we remain. I know change happens, but does this need to happen to this area? Just because a developer and seller see a chance to make more money, it doesn't give them the right to change a zoning that has been in place for over, close to 80 years. I know for a fact that Silver Spurs Stables was built in 1939. This area on Riverside Drive gives the Glendale Rancho history and culture. You have a country in the city. Not many cities can offer that to their residents and visitors so close to a major downtown. Glendale officials should value this. This city has a longstanding commitment to preserve its historic resources as dated in your historical preservation element of the city's general plan. You want to place a legal precedent replacing commercial horse property with commercial multifamily residential property. Have you considered the impacts? You will impact your local equestrian businesses from which we have, from which you have reserved revenue for over 50 years and which serves and is served by the area and region's equine community. Added congestion to the Rancho area, making it unsafe for longtime-existing equestrians, and parking shortages for the CE Zone vendors and visitors. The loss of a wide, safe Allen bridle path to trails in Griffith Park. It will also impact the local school, which you should be aware of. It is Franklin Elementary School, which is a magnet school, which means residents who would be possibly buying these condos would be approaching a school they probably wouldn't be able to attend, because with Franklin, you need to start in kindergarten with the language of your choice. Otherwise, you would not be able to attend your neighborhood school. Parking will impact the present residents. And in speaking for the horses, who cannot speak for themselves, you will impact the owners of the lives of 80 horses who proudly call Silver Spurs Stables their home. Also, Glendale has spent funds and grants for a decade to open up the new Glendale Narrow Riverwalk in 2012. This includes two wonderful arenas for Rancho riders and special local needs required by the grant funders. It turned an eyesore into a recreational amenity for, yes, horses. We have fought long and hard for this land away from, wait, sorry. We have fought long and hard for this land use improvements, and now you want to take a key part of what makes it function away from our many equestrian stakeholders. We need to, we need to keep intact what we have in the Riverside Rancho. In Glendale alone, we have 330 horses in the horse overlay at homes and at boarding and rental stables. We love the unique character of Glendale Rancho and do not want to see you rob our small, important, commercial equine of an important facet that we use and need. The demolition of Silver Spur destroys a commercial building facility, a riding facility, a life-altering venue for underserved children, and a summer camp, which will impact and fulfill many a child's dreams this summer, and hopefully many more to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Harold Parker, please.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, staff. Thank you for the opportunity to address you regarding the proposed zoning of the Silver Spur. I have been keeping horses along the river for over 25 years, and it's had a major impact in what I think are two areas. The Rancho is something that's unique to Glendale. Guys, you can put condos anywhere, but you've got this. This is, I mean, it's, no one else has it. And it's one of the things that makes this city very, very special. The other thing is the impact that the Rancho has had as far as human resources. So positive impact on the city, but also positive impact on human resources. Some of it's very personal to me. My daughter learned to ride in the Rancho, and it changed her life. She does hypotherapy now for kids. And so it's had that kind of a very personal impact. My wife and I also do some work with youth at the Optimist Youth Home in Highland Park, so you may be aware of it. These are young men who are there because the court thinks it's a good idea for them to be there. And we bring them over and let them interact with the horses. And just last week, I had a young man over there from Optimist Youth Home who had done a drawing of Pegasus. And he was showing this at one of their art classes. And I said, "Would you like to come over and sketch some real models?" And when he left after doing that, he says, "Someday, I want to be able to own a horse like this." Well, I think you all know what that means. He's going to have to have some financial resources. He's going to have to be on the right side of things in order to make that happen. This is the personal part of this. This is the deep part of, you know, the important part of the City of Glendale and how it impacts the people. So I hope that you'll consider that when you consider the zoning, because you're the ones who can make it stay what it is now and have the positive impact for the city and for the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
You have the community event announcements, cards, play.
I have the cards. This is the, yes, item number?
Six.
Six. First speaker is Gary Freeman.
Mayor, City Council, my name is Gary Freeman, and I'm a 35-year resident and homeowner here in Glendale. As you may know, June is Pride Month. And throughout Los Angeles, there are going to be a number of celebrations. Glendale will host its first queer art shows this month in celebration of Pride at two different galleries, at the Ace 21 Gallery and at the Roslin Art Gallery. And, or no, from the Roslin Gallery. We'll tell you a little more about their programming in a minute. But for the opening exhibition will be on this Friday, June 8th, from 6 to 9 o'clock in the evening. Following the shows, there will be a celebration party at Gacho's Village on Maryland. In addition to that programming, at the Ace 21 Gallery on June 28th, on Thursday, there will be an LGBT reading series by queer writers at 7:30. So there's some new things happening in Glendale, and I thought you ought to know about them.
Thank you very much.
Hello, dear Mayor Sinanian and City Councilmembers. So I'm here on behalf of Roslin Art Gallery and Abriel Bookstore, which is just one block down the street from you here. As Gary said, on occasion of Pride Month, and in conjunction with the queer exhibit going on at the Ace 21 Gallery, we're proud to present "The Many Faces of Armenians", a celebration of queer Armenian art, which will open this Friday, June 8th, at 6:00 p.m. in the Ace 21 Gallery and at Roslin Art Gallery, 415 East Broadway. Both the Armenian and the LGBTQ communities have experienced persecution at one point or another throughout history. We've both been labeled as "other" and "queer" by society and have been shunned. But this exhibit, on the contrary, will celebrate the notions of queer and other through the art of 15 artists, both local and from abroad. We're organizing this exhibit with GALLUS, the Gay and Lesbian Armenian Society, which is celebrating its 20th anniversary. And during the span of the exhibit, which will go until June 28th, we'll have different events relating to the Armenian LGBTQ community. On Friday, oh, did that end? Oh, okay.
No, go on.
Oh, on Friday, June 15th, we have a preview of a fundraiser event for transmission. On Thursday, June 21st, we partnered with Equality Armenia to bring famous New York author Christopher Atamian in town to present his new book, "A Poet in Washington Heights." On Saturday, June 23rd, GALLUS is sponsoring a performance by New York author, performance artist Nancy Agabian, who'll present a piece titled "Family Returning Blows." And while they're here, we're doing a panel discussion titled "Self-Expression in the Armenian LGBTQ Community", with them and the GALLUS president Haik Boyajian. And we'll close the exhibit on June 28th with a special talk by Rosie Vartiter Arush titled "A Life of Otherness: The Intersection of Queerness and Armenianness Within Familial and Communal Networks." So this is a historic event in Glendale. It's the first queer exhibit happening in Glendale, and I think the first queer Armenian exhibit happening ever. So I hope you can all attend, and thank you.
Thank you.
But I have a question. I have a question.
We have a question from a councilmember, if you don't mind.
Now, you announced two openings, one at the Ace 121 and the other at Roslin. Are they both on the same night, Friday?
Yes, exactly.
At the same time?
Same time, same time. That was their idea of doing a citywide queer event. But only three of us are participating this year, but we're hoping it'll be an annual thing.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And Haik's coming back from Armenia for this? Haik Boyajian's coming back from Armenia for this? Oh, he's back already? Okay. All right, very well, thank you. Bill Doyle? Bill Do, oh.
I was going to speak on the Silver Spurs. Is that okay, or is this a?
This is a different section, but you know what? This is going to be a short meeting. You can actually take five minutes and speak when we're done with the action items.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't out of order here.
Right now, you are.
You are.
But you can speak when we're done with the action items, which will be short today. So do you want to submit a new card, or should I just send this? Requalify this one. Alyssa in the green?
It's the same.
The same, okay. Okay, I'm just going to move on to the next item, which is Action Item 8A. I'll have you read into the record, Mr. Clerk.
8A, Public Works Regarding Levy of Annual Assessment and Preparation of the Engineer's Report to Fiscal Year 2018-2019 for the North San Fernando Road Corridor Landscape Maintenance District. 8A1, Resolution Initiating the Fiscal Year 2018-19 Levy of Annual Assessment and Ordering the Preparation of the Engineer's Report. 2, Resolution Preliminary Approving the Engineer's Report for the Fiscal Year 2018-19 Levy and Collection of Annual Assessment. 3 would be Resolution Declaring the City Council's Intention to Levy and Collect the Annual Assessment for Fiscal Year 2018-19.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we have a very short report by Shay Eccleston-Banoir from Public Works. Shay?
Hi, good evening, Mayor Sinanian, councilmembers. I'm Shay Eccleston-Banoir from the Public Works Department. Before you are resolutions related to the levy and annual assessment for the North San Fernando Road Landscape Maintenance District. The district is 11 years old, and it's located on the western edge of the city, bordered by Linden Avenue to the north, San Fernando Road to the east, Fairmont Avenue and State Route 134 to the south, and Interstate 5 to the west. The assessment pays for various improvements in the district and special benefits, including landscaping, irrigation, tree maintenance, and litter collection. There are three resolutions for you for consideration. The first will order the preparation and filing of the engineer's report for the district. The engineer's report includes a description of the district, an annual budget, a description of the method for calculating each parcel's proportional assessment, and a district roll, which lists the levy amount for each individual parcel. Second, a resolution will preliminarily approve the report. And finally, a third resolution will give notice that a hearing will be held at the regularly-scheduled city council meeting on July 17th, 2018, on the proposed levy. And then, at that meeting, you will be asked to approve the final engineer's report and order the levy. That's July 17th.
Okay. Questions from colleagues? None, their motion?
I'll move the item.
Second. Are we moving all of these together? All call, please. Councilmember Avijanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Carpetian?
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes.
Next item, please.
Next item would be 8B, Public Works Regarding Fiscal Year 2017-18 Americans with Disability Act, ADA Curve Ramp Installation and Sidewalk Repair Program. B1 would be Motion Awarding a Construction Contract to VART Construction Incorporated in the Amount of $463,619, approving a 15% reserve of contingency, rejecting all other bids, and authorizing the city manager to execute the contract. 2 would be Resolution Appropriating $71,000.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, we're going to go directly to Sarkis from Public Works to give you a very quick presentation on this item.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, good afternoon. Good evening, actually. My name is Sarkis Oganesian. On behalf of the Director of Public Works and the Department, I'm here to present very briefly on the Fiscal Year 2017-2018 ADA Curve Ramp Installation and Sidewalk Repair Program. The scope of the work for the project is in District 7 in the city, and it takes care of replacement of curbs, gutters, sidewalks, driveways, cross gutters, and alley aprons. There's going to be curb ramp modifications to meet ADA requirements, as well as the removal of existing street trees and planning of new 24-inch box trees. As part of this project, there's three other small improvements. One of them is going to take place on Los Fila's Road, near Gardena Avenue. There's going to be landscape improvements on the south side, concrete embankment, to further match the north side concrete embankment improvements that the development created. There's going to be on-street parking modifications on North Brand Boulevard. We're going to provide additional metered parking spaces to provide additional parking on Brand Boulevard between Lexington Drive and Milford Street. And finally, Central Avenue and Brand Boulevard crosswalk improvements. We're going to improve two pedestrian, existing pedestrian crossings at two locations near the Incarnation Parish School. And both locations will also receive new and upgraded flashing beacon systems to supplement the uncontrolled marked crossings. It's just a slide showing the project location. Our engineer's estimate for this project was roughly $500,000. Our lowest bid was from VART Construction. Our lowest bid was from VART Construction, Inc., in the amount of $463,619. We are requesting a reserve for contingencies in the amount of 15%, or $69,542.85. A 10% construction management reserve of $46,500. We had a total of five bidders. The funding sources that are gonna be used to fund this project are various, and they range from the state gas tax funds, Parking Fund, CIP Fund, as well as the General Fund, as well as Transportation Development Act funds that we're requesting to appropriate. The project schedule is set to begin in August and be completed by September of this year, barring unforeseen circumstances or adverse weather conditions. So that's approximately 40 working days. Other than that, if you guys have any questions, I'd be more than happy to.
Thank you, sir. Yes. Councilmember Devine?
I have a question on the tree plantings on Los Feliz Road. We are being... Those are being funded by the developers of 435 West Los Feliz Boulevard, correct?
Correct.
How much does that amount to? That funding?
Approximately $46,500 at the moment.
So that's the...
That was condition of approval.
Right, that's the CIP reimbursement fund?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good.
Any other questions?
Not from him, but I have comments.
You have comments? Okay, thank you, sir. Councilmember Avijanian?
What bothers me, I mean usually... This is good. We have five contractors. They came forward, they gave their estimate of how much they're gonna charge us. What bothers me is the VART Corporation or Construction, Inc. is saying $463,000, and then the Excel is saying $779,000. Of course, being a professional engineer, I know that when they have too much work to do, so they say, "I quote it higher, so if I get it..." So it's good. If I don't get it, we have too much to do, so we can't handle it. But we estimated that this will be... Estimate is $500,000. One company comes and goes lower, $463,000, and the highest one is $779,000. Still, I cannot... I'm not comfortable with this. Maybe when we prepare the information or the data, maybe we are missing some things that these people... The gap is so big. I'm not saying anything at this moment, but I want our engineers, those who prepare the bid documents, maybe they have to be more careful. Previously, there were one or two people, they would come forward. As I said, I'm glad this time there are five people that came forward, but on $460,000 or $500,000, the gap being so large bothers me. I just wanted to make a comment on it.
Thank you, sir. How much was the engineer's estimate?
Mr. Mayor, it was $500,000.
So it's right there. The offer is around the city's engineer's estimate.
But then, if they come forward with $779,000, we have to look, see what's going on.
Right, but they don't get the contract. That's why the one that comes close to the engineer's estimate is the one that's being recommended by staff. You wanna add something?
No, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I think you're accurate. I know that in conversations with Councilmember Avijanian, in terms of how some of these bids do come in, and when you do see a bit of a gap between the first proposal versus the fifth, that has bothered you in the past. We have unfortunately no control over what a company's going to submit ultimately, and you're absolutely right. It's based on workload for them, and some of the larger companies, and we know that Excel is a large company, they may not have the capacity right now to want to bid competitively, and they're bidding it higher, so that if they are lucky enough to get it, they're going to go out and possibly get some subcontractors to do the work. And so, they were not successful in this process. So you're accurate in your statements. We unfortunately can't control kind of how the bid process comes out from the outside in. Our control is within kind of the estimates that our engineers do to put the information out there. We will continue to monitor. The nice thing about this is that the $500,000 that's in place, based on the engineer's estimate from the staff side, is very close to the first bidder, and not so close to the second bidder, but most definitely to the first bidder.
Is VART Construction, Inc., an entity that we have had a relationship before?
Almost 20 years, on and off. They've done quite a bit of work in the city of Glendale. They know the city of Glendale.
Have they ever underbid and then failed to deliver on the contract?
Not to my knowledge.
No, sir. No. Do we have a motion?
I'll move the item.
Second.
May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Avijanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Carpetian?
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item would be 12 oral communications, five minutes. Discussion is not limited... Is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Okay, thank you. Folks, we have over 20 speakers, so the less we clap, the sooner we'll all get to speak and leave, hopefully go home. And we have 24 speakers now. So on that note, I welcome all of you, and we'll start with Barbara Winter, followed by Jean Schamberger. And you have five minutes each, but you don't have to take five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Barbara Winter, and I have been a resident of Glendale for several years. My husband and I are owners of three companies based in Glendale. I board horses in Glendale, specifically at 1900 Riverside Drive, Silver Spur, and we ride the trails in Griffith Park. As a resident, I'm deeply concerned about the negative impact that a zoning change would have on our community. The Glendale Burbank Rancho is a unique oasis in this sometimes intense and stressful Los Angeles metro area. The commercial equestrian zone properties provide a tremendous opportunity for people of all economic backgrounds to experience the therapeutic and calming environment that exists within the horse world, whether it's riding or simply being around those horses. An off quoted... An off cited quote is "The outside of a horse is good for the inside of a man or a woman." Retention of the commercial equestrian zoning is essential to preserving the sense of history and place in the Rancho community. Silver Spur Stables has a history of its own, with many famous residents of the Los Angeles area over the decades keeping their horses there. This property also supports several children's horsemanship programs, including one through the LAPD for children of the Watts community. In fact, I can send you a link of a documentary that was done by Gregory Caruso, the son of developer Rick Caruso, who are big supporters of this horsemanship program. I have seen lives transformed at this stable and others through the therapy of horses. While I agree we need more housing units in California, what we need are affordable units, not luxury condos. There are plenty of other places better suited for those units, areas already zoned for residential use or other commercial zoning. The impact on the Rancho of losing just one horse property would be devastating, resulting in more traffic that threatens the safety of many horseback riders and cyclists on the streets of the Rancho, and it paves the way for more developers to grab up equestrian zone properties. The Glendale Rancho dates back approximately 100 years. The property in question was built in the 1930s. A different developer attempted to gain a variance on this very property in 1968, and the Glendale Board of Zoning Appeals had the wisdom to deny the developer's request for a zoning variance that would have allowed him to destroy the horse stables and build condos. That zoning appeals board understood the value to the community at large in maintaining the Rancho equestrian zone. I'm asking you to show that same wisdom and deny this request.
Thank you. Jean Schamberger, followed by Nancy Sherwood.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the Glendale City Council. My name is Jean Schamberger. Thank you very much for being receptive to all of us here to speak about the Glendale Rancho tonight. I am a Burbank resident, along with my husband. We own two properties in the Burbank Rancho. My horse is a Glendale resident. He has never been so happy in his life. We have been in horses for 30 years in Southern California. I've been in horses since I was seven. I grew up in rural settings and went to law school in a rural setting, and about the only way that I got dragged to Southern California for a job 30 years ago was finding out about the Burbank and Glendale Rancho. And so, we came here. In any event, we've loved living in the Rancho for all the reasons that many of my co-horse people will be telling you about, and I'll probably tell you more about them, because we're probably gonna see a lot of each other this summer. But, you know, one girl's, one horse's story is when we came to Glendale, we finally felt like we actually really could do horses in Southern California in the best way ever. And this is after having horses at home, having horses at the Los Angeles Equestrian Center, having horses in Sun Valley, and right under our nose was Glendale. We were so happy to get into the barn that we're in. We're in one of the adjacent properties. We're not in the Silver Spur property, but we're in the largest property of that block of commercial equestrian properties. And so, I am absolutely opposed to Silver Spur's zoning being changed. Goes without saying, probably for many of us in the room, we all have friends in all of these barns. At our barn, which is a couple down the road there, we have 54 horses, very dedicated people from all communities, Burbank, Glendale, Los Angeles. So my story is gonna be echoed over several hundred times, and with the broader effects that many will speak on because of traffic and the like, the loss of many of these programs that Glendale supports. As a side note, it was really wonderful to see some of the commendations earlier this evening. Glendale is a great city, like Burbank is a great city, and it's wonderful to be neighbors with you. So as a part-time Glendale resident, you know, and besides restaurants, shopping, services, car repair, things we do in Glendale, between boarding and the Glendale Horse Support Services, probably drop close to $10,000 a year in Glendale, and that's echoed many times over by many in this room and otherwise. So I'll give you back a little bit of time and probably speak with you again, but thank you very much for hearing us out, and thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you, have a good night. Nancy Sherwood, followed by Lima Baltenas.
Lima. Mayor, council members, my name is Nancy Sherwood, and I am a longtime Rancho resident at Burbank. Earlier this year, a friend of mine in Temecula, who owns a layup facility, got a letter from the county informing her that her next-door neighbor wanted to have the zoning changed so that she could increase the size of her drug rehab facility. Now, all of the houses in this area are 10-acre minimum lots. They wanted to increase their patient number by 10. They currently have six, so it would make 16 total, and a staff of 23. This area is zoned for vineyards and equine enterprises only. My friend had a few supporters. They went to the meeting at the county commissioner's office, and the meeting was loaded with supporters for the drug rehab and alcohol rehab. They rambled on about how great it was and how it was a much-needed facility. My girlfriend and her supporters all just kind of stood up and said, "It's about the zoning. We need to maintain the zoning." So, hearing over, the county commissioner started speaking. He spoke about his alcoholic mother and how he wished he had had a facility like this rehab facility for her to go into, because she died an alcoholic without ever getting any help. But, he said, "They knew the zoning when they bought this property, when they bought this house on 10 acres." Ultimately, they called for the vote, 5 to nothing in favor of upholding the existing zoning, absolutely the right thing to do. 1900 Riverside Drive is less than one acre. I ask you, would you want 21 homes next to you on less than an acre? Or would you want your zoning eroded so badly that your quality of life was gone? I want to thank you for your time. I also want to thank you for all of the street and sidewalk improvements that have been going on at 1900 Riverside Drive, which is right at the Burbank border, all the way east of there. Thank you so much. You have a great evening.
Thank you. You have a great evening as well. Lima Baltenas, followed by Star Irvine.
My name is Lima Baltenas. I'd like to address three issues, which, if you would address them, would negate the need for the proposed electric, water, and sewage rate increases. Issue number one, the illegal multimillion-dollar GWP transfer of funds to the General Fund. Issue number two, the fraudulent budget expense item, $35 million payments every single year on the $500 million bond to remodel the Grayson Plant, and that's not even been approved by the city council. So it's actually, God willing, it never will be approved, and so it's a fraudulent line item to put in $35,000 a year payment when you don't even have the bond. Issue number three, the outrageous multimillion-dollar pay raises proposed for Glendale City employees. If these are going to be addressed by the city council, then there is going to be no need for electric, water, and sewage rate increases. Now, let's be more specific with regards to issue number one, the illegal multimillion-dollar GWP transfer of funds to the General Fund. The Superior Court of California has ruled that the GWP is illegally transferring millions of dollars to the General Fund against the Glendale City Charter. The Superior Court has ruled that GWP must return the stolen money back to the Glendale residents. GWP has refused to give back the stolen money to the people. GWP appeals the case, stalling for time. GWP continues to transfer millions of dollars to the General Fund every single year illegally. With regards to issue number two, the Grayson Power Plant has not been authorized by the city council. The $500 million bond has not been issued. Why would you put down a highly deceptive budget expense item of $35 million a year to service this? This is crooked bookkeeping. Issue number three, the immoral multimillion-dollar pay raises to Glendale City employees is totally absurd. Why? A, considering the hefty electric power and sewage rate increases proposed for Glendale residents. B, considering the continuing illegal transfer of GWP funds to the General Fund. And C, considering Glendale is facing imminent bankruptcy for underpayment of employee pension funds. Please address these following three issues, and there will be no need to raise electric, water, and sewage rates for the rest of our residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Star Irvine, followed by Ingolf Clengler.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
I have some paperwork I'd like you to take...
Take it here.
Thanks for your time. I got involved in this because my daughter volunteers at Silver Spurs. Excuse me.
Take it down.
Okay, time to run now. Anyway, okay. My daughter was at Burroughs High School. I don't know if you... Anyone familiar with Burroughs High School?
I'm a Burbank High School graduate.
Okay, well, you know Burroughs then. You may not know that four young people have killed themselves this year at Burroughs High School, and that's not... I don't have the numbers on those that tried. There's a lot of drama, and for my daughter, this... The horse community has given her a sense of getting off the phone. You're not on the phone when you're on your horse, usually. It's given her a comfort. I went out into the community and started knocking on your constituent stores. Most of the people in that neighborhood, beyond like a block, have no idea this is going on. As you know, Silver Spurs is at the border, so when the petitions went out, the notices, half of it was Burbank. The other 25% is the people that want to sell their property. And then, the other 25% are kind of like a convalescent home in some apartments. So a lot of people don't know this is going on. As I... As I walked around the community and talked to people, and I couldn't walk a lot, I cruised around in my Crown Vic, and I'd sort of talk to, see people walking and engage with them, is I found that there are lots of groups of people walking, a lot of animators. As you know, Glendale has a Disney Animation, right, over off of, is it Flower and Sonora? And they also, Disney encourages bicyclists. A lot of people don't realize that that area is, on the weekend, hundreds, hundreds of cyclists ride the area, and they come dropping through, and they're in pretty much over $1,000 price bicycles, cycles going through the community. I think you also know that a cyclist was killed in the last month. Do you know that? Do you all know that a cyclist was killed at Alameda, right near that area? All I can see is if, as the domino effect of condos takes over Riverside, there will be probably over 400 units that will eventually be up should you all decide to approve this because all the property owners are on the Rancho on that north side. They want to sell, which will eliminate the view of the historical area, and it also put over, how many cars do we think, over 400 units will create? What do we think, you guys? At least 600 vehicles, right? Probably two per unit? Right? That's like 800 vehicles. And there are hundreds of cyclists that go down Riverside Drive on the weekends and during the day. And I think that that, even though it's one, I'm, I love the horse community, I'm allergic to horses. However, I feel that the safety of the horse community, the cyclists, you have a senior staff member named Mitch that oversees the street development. He's a seventy-year-old man. Do you know who he is? He's overseeing your, your street development with the...
Must be Burbank.
Huh?
Must be Burbank.
No, he works for you. His name's Mitch. He told me to talk to Armon Simonian in relation to this. Well, he's, you got him out of LA County. He was so good at what he does, you brought him in in his senior years. Anyway, he, on his lunch hour, he runs four miles down Riverside over into that area. And I guess my thing is that the safety is really, really a concern, and the potential for more accidents going on is, is a reality. And so that's why I'm here, is to let you realize that the safety of the people who ride their bikes, who are on their horses, and who run the area. At Disney, as you know, they encourage bicyclists. They encourage people to ride their bikes. So that's what I got to tell you. Thank you.
Thank you. Ingolf Clangler, followed by Colleen Stratten.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Council members and staff. My name is Ingolf Clangler, and I also am a member of the Glendale Rancho Neighborhood Association, and I'm here to speak to you tonight against the rezoning of the Silver Spurs stable. As others have mentioned, Silver Spurs is almost eighty years old. It plus only five other properties in the Glendale Rancho neighborhood are the only commercial equestrian zone properties in all of Glendale. Specifically, Silver Spur is a commercial boarding facility, a riding facility, and a venue for children. The commercial equestrian zone was developed specifically to meet the needs of the Glendale Rancho and to encourage and support the development of equestrian-related activities. Demolishing Silver Spur would do just the opposite. It would destroy the development of related, of equestrian-related activities. The land use element of Glendale's general plan includes the provision to safeguard residential neighborhoods from the intrusion of incompatible and disruptive uses. The historic preservation element of Glendale's general plan includes the goal of preserving historic resources in Glendale which define community character. There's a city brochure from Glendale entitled, "Come Home to Glendale, California," in which it describes the Rancho as one of the few urban areas in Los Angeles County that allows residents to keep horses on their property. My wife and I have owned horses for over two decades, and it was the allure of keeping them in our property, and as my wife likes to say, seeing them from her bedroom window, that made us move to the Rancho seventeen years ago. The destruction of Silver Spur and the rezoning of that lot to multifamily residential has the grave potential of destroying the entire neighborhood due to the cumulative effects of that rezoning. Finally, last month, the city council adopted a moratorium on residential development in downtown Glendale. There is no demonstrated need for additional housing, and certainly no public need that would justify destroying a commercial boarding and riding facility and violating the integrity of the historic Rancho neighborhood. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Colleen Stratten, followed by Bill Luddy.
Good evening. I just wanted to say that I am a Glendale resident and homeowner. I've lived in Glendale for twenty-five years, and I moved to Glendale specifically because I boarded my horse in the Rancho area. Did you hear everything I said?
We did.
Sorry about that. I'm not, I'm not in the habit of public speaking. What I was saying is that I moved to Glendale because I, because of the Rancho area and the equestrian district, and it's a small community of horse owners, and it's a tight-knit community, and it's very special, and there's nothing like it in the LA area or in California, anywhere else. And it would be a tragedy to, to destroy it, and that's what, if this zoning goes through, it would, what, what could possibly happen is that other properties, that could happen to other properties, and anyway, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Bill Luddy, followed by Anula Lorick.
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Bill Luddy, a Burbank Rancho resident. To your great relief, they've covered most of it.
Best speech ever, coming up.
We're getting there. I do want to finish, make one final point that hasn't been touched on, which is that Glendale has beaten its own housing, regional housing goals. You've surpassed those. And you've got a moratorium in the downtown because of quality of life issues that have come up from overdevelopment, over-residential. That moratorium was enacted to give you time to develop solutions to problems brought on by overdevelopment. If you allow this, the Silver Spur project to go forward, you'll be creating the same kinds of problems and the same quality of life issues that you're trying to resolve now in the downtown. You can avoid creating more problems for yourself. In summary, we don't need it. We don't want it. Just say no.
Anula Lorick, followed by Nikki Bone.
Good evening, Mayor, and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to voice my concern. My story is different from the horse issue. I sympathize with you. But I live in, on Salem Street, close to Glendale Galleria. On the corner of the Salem Street and Central, there is an abandoned building, a former Clancy's Restaurant, and that building, being abandoned, is, is a magnet to homeless people. So homeless people come and sleep, especially in the back of the building. So numerous times, we had to call the police, and they came, were responsive, and they tried to move them, but they cannot move them anywhere. If the homeless people want to move themselves, they move. If they don't, they stay. So the problem is that, if I'm not mistaken by law, the homeless, homeless people cannot sleep on the street at night. So that's why we call them, some of them are mentally ill, so they pose a danger, and my son is afraid of them. He's twelve years old, so we have to pass to the other side of the street to cross. So that is an ongoing problem. So what can be done? I just hope that the owner of that building can wall it off somehow or restrict the access to the, to that building so that, even now, I think there's a homeless person in the back, so that it is not an inviting place for the homeless people.
Will someone from staff please speak to Ms. Lorick?
Yes, we absolutely will. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council will get her name and number. I also have the police chief who's here, who listened to what you had to say, ma'am. We will definitely follow up in terms of that corner and also follow up with the owner of the property to see what we can do. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nikki Bone, followed by Chris Devon.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and Council. It's my first time doing this. As you can see, it's my first time doing this. I've never had to complain about anything, but I'm here about the same issue, just apart from the homeless, about Salem Street. I live in the same residency unit as Anula Lorick and her family. I moved to Glendale because, coming from Europe, it's very similar to the European communities where we have a center where we can go for coffee, we can go do some shopping, but then we spread out to our suburban areas where we have our homes and families. In the last six years that I've been here, I understand that the developers have come in, and we've had all this stuff kind of building up, and a lot of new people, and which is great, but it's also brought a lot of trash. And Salem Street, which used to be an extremely clean street with brand-new trees which were planted the day that I moved into that street, six years ago, and they're still growing, with brand-new grass, now are filled with trash. There are two laws that are being built. I understand when there's construction, there's trash. I usually don't mind. As I said, six years, I've never seen this problem, and this year it's been ongoing and ongoing. And because of this, other people that walk around that are not residents or residents, they see the trash on the floor, and then they just dispose of their own because we're obviously just trashing all over the street, including Columbus Street, which is completely covered in trash. Apparently, there's some graffiti on the walls. It's a family community. I moved here because I wanted to be able to walk on the streets safely in the evening. I didn't want to get restricted and feel like I'm walking through trash. The second issue on top of the trash is there have been a large, a large number of dog feces on the floor, all over the street. So I literally have to walk and, and look at the floor when I'm trying to go have a coffee in the morning. And also, it's, it's just, you know, there was some feces that did not look like dog feces either in front of Clancy's. So we need a, I, I don't know how we can handle this, but we need to maybe post some signs or put some stronger littering laws on, especially with the dog feces. Also, people are disposing dog feces in plastic bags and then just shoving them and throwing them into that trash in the grass next to the brand-new trees that the Glendale City Council and city put in six years ago so it can grow and be nice and beautiful and shade us and make it a suburban neighborhood, just like we wanted it to be, so.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
You did very well for the first time.
Oh, thank you. Yes, yes. Is this near Veterans Village, Salem?
It's right across from Veterans Village. On, yes, on, the, the dog feces issue has started happening about, I believe, six months ago, I think, and I've been seeing it quite often, and it's usually in the same spot. Now, I'm, I love dogs. I have a cat myself. I used to own a dog. It's nothing against it. We just have to play stronger rules, maybe even put a trash can for it over there so people can have somewhere to dispose. Just today, walking here, there was a bag thrown on the floor with dog feces because there's nowhere for them to dispose it. I don't know, maybe get the housing units to, to implement some kind of trash bin for it, just impose stronger laws on it because, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We have, I think we have direction on that.
Yes, we'll definitely look into it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Chris Devon, followed by Steve Starleaf.
Good evening, Mayor, city council. I guess I'm literally coming with hat in hand, so how often can you get to hear that? But thank you for hearing me tonight. I'm here to talk about Silver Spur rezoning, if you didn't guess. So you truly have a unique area of Los Angeles, in a city where unique areas are diminishing quickly, and it's a destination for people. We board our horses at Silver Spur Stables, and we live at 400 West Riverside, which is directly next door to Silver Spur Stables. So it's our adjacent neighbor. My office faces the trails, and I'll tell you, there's people that come from all areas of Los Angeles that are all ages, races, demographics, that ride the horse trails every day. I watch them from eight in the morning till six at night, all day, seven days a week. I can't tell you how many times we're at the stables. People come just to bring their children, to let them pet the goats or the sheeps or pigs, just to see the horses, just to escape the city for a day. It really is a true oasis, just like people go to the beach. It's a unique area for them to live there. We moved from West Hollywood to the Rancho area just to be, buy our horses, to be part of that community and part of that lifestyle. And it is a lifestyle, just like people that live in Manhattan Beach walk around with surfboards and flip-flops on. It's, it's a lifestyle. It's a community. We're really a family there. It's a real important area to place, to a lot of people. I can't tell you the amount of times I've been at the barn and I see a grandfather or grandmother bring their granddaughter, grandson to the barn for lessons or camp, and they talk about how they learned how to ride there when they were six years old or ten years old, and they're continuing the tradition, and they talk about with fond memories they had growing up there as, as a child. We also serve inner-city children. I'm part of the Operation Progress program with the LAPD, and we bring inner-city kids from wants that are really good kids. They have good graves. They, they don't get in trouble, but they're in bad living situations. They live in cars. Their families are in and out of jail or court, and they really bring them there. We teach them about horsemanship. We, we are mentors to them. We teach them about nutrition, food. I had one child last season that was ten, didn't know what asparagus was. I urged him to try it for a first time, and he loved it. But it's really important to them, and these are kids that were scared to bring home Mylar Heart blooms for Valentine's Day because they were the wrong color for their neighborhood. They refuse to take them with us. So as I said, this is a truly unique area. It's special to us, too. My wife and I got married at Silver Spur Stables. That's how important it is to us. So, you know, we all have a truly unique opportunity to keep this special area special, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Starleaf, followed by Mike Mohell. Hey, Mike.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council staff, wonderful to be here. Thank you. I also want to speak in regards to the Silver Spur issue and eighteen-year Glendale resident, but I want to tell you a brief story. Hopefully, I can give back some of my time, too. In 1987, I wrote a letter to the then-mayor of Burbank, Michael Hastings, about the idea for a tennis center in Burbank, and that began a long quest that went many years. But I just want to tell you quickly what happened. Oh, and Mr. Najaya, I came to you years ago about feeding the homeless at Salem Lutheran School, and you helped me out. I met you in your office. Thank you very much. Did that for a number of years. I wanted to tell you that first we proposed this up near Cabrini Villas, a nineteen-acre debris basin, and I was, she was on the other foot. I was trying to build something the residents didn't like. There's eight-hundred-and-sixty-three units or sixty-two units at Cabrini Villas. The Catholic Church came out. It was a, a big city council meeting, and the residents said, "We don't want it," and the city council redirected me. The staff then took me up to Stout Park. You're all aware of the Castaway Restaurant and the golf course, and said, "Well, maybe that would be compatible." But I remember that date because on October 5th, 1990, it was a three-two vote of the city council against allowing myself and the local developer to build the center. It was a three-two vote, and Mr. Hastings and Mr. Tim Murphy at the time battled for me, but there were three votes against. But I must say, the, the residents, the debris basin were correct, and the... But I must say, the, the residents, the debris basin were correct, and the, the, let's see, then the next battle was with the Walnut Homeowners Association, so I was on the other side of it, and they didn't want the traffic up and down Walnut Street, and they were correct in hindsight. Then we went to, so I've actually been on both sides of this issue, we went to the, there used to be a drive-in theater where now sits Von's Pavilion. So ran that up the flagpole as well, but some of these very residents didn't see that that would work either. Somebody from the city, we had a 2:00 AM meeting with many, many people, we had a special public hearing with 400 speakers. I had 51, they had 49, but again, I lost that vote. The city suggested, why don't we, Steve, you're trying to keep trying to change the zone, change the city's plan. That's not going to fly. You'll, you'll be dead before there's a tennis center if you keep trying this. Why don't we build it in commercial recreation land that's already commercial recreation? So now I can say it's 25 years later, and there's a public-private partnership that's, I think, very successful between the city of Burbank and myself, known as the Burbank Tennis Center. But for, for many years, I was on the other side, trying to get it put somewhere where it didn't belong. So I do want to tell that quick story that I see the, the wisdom now because we're surrounded by parking, we're easy access on Glen Oaks, over by the Aki over there, and fast food restaurants and so forth. And the other aspect is, just quickly, that the lady spoke about Burrows High School where my son will be attending. We've since moved to 1411 Valley Heart Drive, right in the area. My son has a horse now. I wouldn't know the front of one from the back of one, but I'm not particularly fond of that. But I do want to say that he went through extreme emotional difficulty, I'm going to hit this really fast, last year, came within three feet of losing him, myself, where he said any last words, and I said, "Yeah, this, this is not going to happen," and I grabbed him. Long story short, through an incredible trainer at this Whispering Willow, a horse that had been abandoned or something or other, they patched him together, and we got directed, and it basically had a huge part of saving his life. So it, it's an incredible experience, and we're so grateful, I think it was divine intervention. But it was a great experience, and I would encourage you to look at another way to look at investment, and highest and best use is always invest in people. When we all go, we're all going to leave it all behind, no matter how much we have, it's all going to stay behind, but when we invest in people, we can really carry on a legacy, and that's what I want you to realize, is that, you know, in my son's story, and then I hear this gala over here, for, you know, suicides at Burrows where he'll be attending next year, we easily could have been one of those stories. We had your wonderful Glendale Police at our house up on Melwood Drive. It was quite a scene, and you guys did a great job. I thought I'd give back time, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I'd urge you to not do the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mike Mohill followed by Alisa Cunningham.
Good evening, Mayor, Senyanian and Council members. I'd like to first say a few words for the people from the Rancho area. They're doing the right thing. They're speaking out, letting you know how they feel. They all have heartfelt stories, like a lot of people. I'm glad they're all here. Now, I'm here for a different issue, for another community. In this case, this community is in the Glendale Unified School District Board location, Kenwood, Kenneth, excuse me, that's Jackson and Wilson. I find it very disappointing that neither Mayor Senyanian or Council members have ever told the residents near GUSD headquarters that the school board would have to first offer to sell their property by law to another government agency like the seat of Glendale and not to a private developer. Why did our city manager, Yasmin Beers, and city attorney, Mike Garcia, fail to inform Council members and the public of this law? Council members, why are you not stepping forward and offering to buy the Glendale Unified School District Headquarters property and build a needed park? In 2006, the downtown specific plan stated the need for over 600 acres of parkland and not more mini parks. Why is the Glendale Unified School District Board selling their headquarters building at a discount to a private developer for a so-called moderate housing project? Who is making money on this deal? Council members, please do the right thing and purchase the GUSD headquarters and turn that property into a needed park as the community desires and not another mega apartment complex. We do not need a pie-in-the-sky park over the 134 freeway as people see discussed at council. This council needs to stop being on the side of wealthy developers and real estate interests and be on the side of the voters who put you all into office in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill. Is there a statute or some legal framework that mandates that the city purchase, that this land be offered to us first before it goes public?
I'm not aware of that.
But I would ask. Thank you. Alisa Cunningham followed by Sharon Springer.
Good evening, Mayor, Council and staff. My name is Alisa Cunningham, and I'm here to speak in opposition to the upcoming proposed small-lot development at 1900 Riverside Drive. The current owner, Tom Bell, was well aware when he purchased the property 11 years ago that his property is zoned commercial equestrian and not residential. If he wishes to divest himself of this investment, there are buyers for it with its current zoning and current usage. Unfortunately, he appears to want more money than he would get selling it as it is, so in order to do that, he needs to get his zone changed to residential. This is not a sleepy, underutilized corner of Glendale. This property is a critical and thriving cornerstone of the equestrian district. As previously noted, there are plenty of places to do this pilot small-lot project that won't decimate an entire neighborhood. To that end, I'd like to point out that the number of residential units the city of Glendale housing element allocates to the commercial equestrian zone is zero. Glendale, as mentioned, has surpassed its regional housing goals. There is no need for additional housing that would justify violating the integrity of the historic Rancho neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Springer followed by Lynn Brown.
Thank you, Mayor Senyanian and Glendale City Council. My name is Sharon Springer, and it's good to see all of you, and I'm very honored to stand here and address you. And I'm here to respectfully ask you to not change the rezoning of the historic Silver Spur property to any non-equestrian use. And much of what I wanted to say has already been said. I think that there are few cities in the world that have ranchos, and all cities have apartment complexes and condos. Two years ago, I visited the Roman Coliseum, and I'm, maybe you've been there, and there are huge chunks of it missing, and those chunks were sold off for other development, you know, for income, I guess it was recess, recession economic times, and so now there are huge chunks of the Coliseum missing. The money is gone that they got for selling parts of the Coliseum, and, and it'll never be the same, and I wonder if they wish they had those parts of the Coliseum back, because once they're gone, they're gone forever. And the pressure never goes away. We have pressure to develop every day, but once an historic property is gone, it's gone. And I don't live in the Rancho, I live in another beautiful part of Burbank, but I run through the Rancho. We start usually at Main and Alameda, and we'll run for 10 miles, either down Riverside through Griffith Park, round trip, or we'll go down the other way and we'll run on Riverside through Toluca Lake. And it really approaches a linear park, in my opinion, and maybe one day it can be a complete street, complete with equestrian safety, bicycle safety, pedestrian safety. And the ambience is very important to the Rancho neighborhood and other neighborhoods in Burbank, and I just respectfully ask that you protect, protect the charm and the historic nature of the Rancho, and please don't vote for rezoning the Silver Spur property. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lynn Brown followed by Daniel Brotman.
Good evening, I'm Lynn Brown. Honorable Mayor and Council, and Council member officials and staff, thank you for this opportunity to be here. I'm a start, I only have a very short speech, so I'm going to say something else. I moved here from Northern California about 40 years ago. I had children for whom life was not livable unless they could go riding, so we moved, I brought them over to Griffith Park or to the, the Rancho area and started them riding. And I started riding myself, and I was blown away with this incredible place. Not another major urban city in the United States that has horsekeeping in the center of it. And that was for me, an amazing thing, just to be able to go to cowboy land and ride a horse and see the animals, and then go back and tuck the dirt off my boots and go to the opera, or go to the, to the beach, or, you know, all the things that are, that are the, the advantages of a major city with this in the middle of it. It's unique. I don't think there's another major city, there's maybe small places like Chino or, or places like that that have horsekeeping in the middle of the city, but not major cities. I am the Vice President of the Los Angeles Equine Advisory Committee, which was, we were informed in our March meeting that a developer architect had applied for the planning division for a change of zoning at the Silver Spur Stables. The LAEC, that's the Los Angeles Equine Advisory Committee, is an official advisory committee to Los Angeles City Council. Established in 2009, 29, the jurisdiction of the LAEC encompasses parks and trail safety, usage and access, disaster and emergency response, events to advance equine achievement and performance, legislation that improves equestrian lifestyle and property status, preservation of equestrian trails and support for equestrian neighborhoods. LAEC representatives are appointed by Los Angeles City Council members from each council district. So we're an official City Council arm. The Silver Spurs are important, you already heard this so many times, an important historic, cultural and recreational venue that has served the city of Glendale, citizens of Glendale and neighboring communities for over 80 years. One of the things that I wanted to point out is, well, after people have gone horseback riding or done all the things they've done, I know I personally go have lunch, and then I might go drop off my dry cleaning because its parking is much better over there than it is where I live. So we, the, 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 it's not just horses, it's what we do. It's the grocery stores, it's the hotels. When the Los Angeles Equestrian Center has a big show there, people have to stay somewhere, they have to stay in hotels, they have to eat somewhere, they go to the grocery store. You know, they, you know, they also use barriers and veterinarians and go to the tack stores and all of the other ancillary businesses, including truck sales. Generations of local and regional riders access this area for boarding, training, instruction and charitable events open to the public. The property provides convenient access to the 56 miles of trail within Griffith, City of Griffith Park, City of Los Angeles. The major reason people buy homes in Glendale Rancho is the availability of residential horsekeeping and the special lifestyle it affords. Rezoning the Silver Spur property would negatively impact the residents of the Glendale Rancho to urbanization. The loss of horsekeeping facility in the Glendale Rancho will place horseback riders from adjacent horsekeeping neighborhoods in Burbank and Los Angeles at higher risk from equestrian traffic congestion on Riverside Drive. The equestrian neighborhoods of the Glendale and Burbank ranchos located in the core of a major urban center while immediately adjacent to Griffith Park, which is the largest urban wilderness in the United States, the largest urban wilderness park, I mean, in the U.S. There's no other, nothing like that, it's the only one. The LAEC, Los Angeles Equine Advisory Committee, strongly opposes the proposed zone change and urges the Glendale Planning Commission to deny the zone change. LAEC does not oppose appropriately cited housing, including affordable units, but not at the expense of losing this important part of Glendale's equestrian heritage. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Daniel Brotman followed by Frank Yallow.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Senyanian, Council members, staff. I would like to surface some concerns, excuse me, let me say, my name is Dan Brotman, for the record, and I'm with the Glendale Environmental Coalition. Yes, I'd like to discuss some concerns about the Grayson RFP process. Before I do that, there is some good news. The pre-bid conference that took place last week was well-attended, and I felt the vibe was very good there. My sense is that there is a lot of interest in providing certain solutions to the city, for instance, battery storage, and also for developing solar on city-owned property. Having said that, it looks to me now that the RFP will ultimately fall short. There are two issues that lead me to say this. First, the 90-day RFP timeline is just too short. Remember, this was first approved by council as an RFI, Request for Information. 90 days for an RFI makes sense, after all, it's just information, but then it morphed into an RFP, a Request for Proposal. 90 days for companies to put together firm proposals is definitely more challenging. Based on conversations I've had with a few potential bidders, there shouldn't be a problem for companies that are simply proposing to sell GWP a battery, for instance, or to put solar on a city property. That's all fairly straightforward. But it's a lot more complicated for companies that are thinking about consolidating, for instance, a number of private commercial spaces into a virtual power plant, or doing energy efficiency or demand response. This takes getting out into the community, having lots and lots of conversations with individual property owners, and hopefully getting a lot of letters of intent signed before putting down a firm bid, and this just doesn't happen in 90 days. So the issue is this, I think we'll get good proposals for our 50-megawatt battery and for small amounts of solar, but it's not going to solve the real problem that we have. The real problem is how to bring down that 350-megawatt peak load number. Now, we, and by this I mean the Glendale Environmental Coalition, have offered to play a role in helping grease the skids for clean energy firms that might be thinking of proposing more complex solutions involving private sites. I'm not going to go into all the details here, but there's a good model in what a group called Clean Energy 805 has been doing in Santa Barbara and Ventura Counties. They've been working cooperatively with Edison, they've organized two very well-attended workshops. I've put an offer on the table to do the same here in Glendale. We have a lot of members eager to roll up their sleeves and work on this. Unfortunately, there's only been radio silence from the city. The second problem with the RFP is that GWP is still wildly overstating the amount of power that this city needs. They say we need a contingency buffer of 171 megawatts, which is almost 50% of our peak, all-time peak load. This is the N minus one minus one argument you've heard so many times. The fact is, N minus one minus one is not a FERC requirement, as we are sometimes told, nor is it a requirement of the LADWP Balancing Authority Contract, or BOSA, as we are told at other times. It's a policy choice with profound financial implications. That excess capacity, which will largely sit unused, will cost ratepayers a lot of That excess capacity, which will largely sit unused, will cost ratepayers a lot of money. This is the real reason rates are budgeted to go up, and it's not needed to ensure reliability. So I suggest that council consider empowering the commission to study this issue, ideally with the help of outside experts. It wouldn't cost a lot, wouldn't take a lot of time, in fact, it could all be done concurrently with the RFP. But it's very, very important to determine how much reserve margin this city really needs. I believe our evidence is that it is not anywhere near one-hundred-and-seventy-one megawatts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brotman. Frank Gallo.
Can I ask?
Sure.
Our city manager, have we had?
Mr. Gallo, just a second.
Have we had any negative feedback from bidders regarding the timeline that we've given them?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, councilmember Devine, we have not heard from any of the interested parties who were at the pre-proposal bid meeting, as well as those who listened in on the webinar. And that number is above one-hundred-and-fifty vendors who were interested. We have not heard any issues as it relates to the ninety days that this RFP is actually out on the street. Initially, the council had directed us to bring this back and have a ninety-day pause. As you know, we said that we would have the RFP out on the streets for ninety days, and then we would be before you sometime after that, which would probably push this to one-hundred-and-twenty-plus days. So this process, as you know, is open from May third through August third. And again, to answer your question, nobody has come forward to GWP and said that they have any issues with the timeline. To the contrary, as part of some of the questions that have come prior to the pre-bid proposal, and I'm sure during that process, the timeline seems to be working just fine.
Question for, the gentleman stated that there was a good vibe in the room. Was he present in the room?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, there's a bit of a story related to that. Initially, Mr. Brotman had asked to be present in the room. Our standard operating procedure is not to have any observers in the room when we do have pre-bid proposals across the board in the city and in any of our departments. That is our standard operating procedures. He had requested to be present. I had responded to his email after Mr. Zern had responded to his email previous to that, that he would not be able to be present. However, if he were to be part of a qualified firm, meaning if he were to be working with a qualified firm, he had every right to be present in the room. Not sure what happened in terms of misinformation. We didn't hear from Mr. Brotman in terms of him putting his own name in. Mr. Glenn Webb came forward and brought forward a name of a company that either he said he owns or he works with. We were unable to find that company and have any kind of indication that there's a company that could provide the specifications that were within that bid. Mr. Brotman ended up showing up at the UOC that day. There was some exchange of information between Mr. Brotman and Mr. Zern. Ultimately, Mr. Brotman was allowed to come in to the pre-bid meeting, and he observed, as did Mr. Webb. Now, this is not our standard operating procedure, but we did not want to not allow him in based on the fact that he was at the UOC, even though we gave him access to listen in on the webcam.
I mean, I have a problem, he says he's contacting these other, these other companies that are there trying to figure out the RFQ, so this, I don't want to get into a long discussion, I want to end this discussion, but I have problems. If we're gonna do this on any, this and any other bid process, that we stick to our procedures strictly. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Senator Jerrion, let's not do that. Mr. Brotman, let's not do that, because this is public comment, it's gonna take forever. Maybe there's some kind of other venue.
That I made?
No.
I repeated what you said.
Let's, okay, Mr. Gallo, I apologize. Why don't we go on with your comments, followed by David Hosh, Hock, sorry, one of those.
Frank Gallo, Glendale Coalition for Better Government, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Next week, you will be talking about the city's general, the city's general fund and the city's budget. According to the proposed budget, the resources of the general fund will be increased by about six percent, or fifteen million dollars. About half of that will be going to the police department, some six-point-six million dollars. That's not unusual. Public safety cost has been increasing steadily for the last sixteen years, at a much higher pace than general fund resources. Public safety is the largest cost in the general fund, sacking up sixty-five percent of the fund's resources. Almost any increase in the general fund resources ends up going to public safety. As a result of that, public works, parks, libraries, housing assistance have become more dependent on grants and federal funds for their functioning. For many years, the Glendale Coalition for Better Government has said that these public safety costs are unsustainable, and those concerns continue to be ignored. In two thousand and three, public safety was about thirty-four percent of the general fund appropriations, just in line with the cost of public safety, fire, and police in many other cities. Now, the cost of public safety has almost doubled, while we have single-digit increases in population, about five percent. The city has been looking for resources to balance the budget, from creating or increasing new taxes, such is the case of the transient occupancy tax, to increasing fees to the use of non-recurring revenue, such is the case of the Glendale Redevelopment Agency. The fees have increased a four-fold in the last four years, and I have no doubt that single resident homeowners would be the most affected. You seem to be running out of ways to increase income. Isn't it time to address the cost drivers, fire and police? If you were in a private company, you just don't increase prices every single year. You look for the cost drivers and you see how to cost control those drivers of cost. You see how to cut costs. So I will encourage you to please make a difference this year, next week, when you talk about the general budget. You have still some time to ask for some suggestions from city staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. David Hock, I think, followed by Bill Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers and staff. My name is Dave Hoak. I was formerly a resident here in Glendale. The wife and I purchased a home at Stanton Avenue in the river bottom in those days, now the Rancho, in nineteen seventy-six, and we lived there until eighty, when we were able to upsize a little bit in property and bought in a larger place in Burbank. We're within a quarter mile of our original home, so we're familiar with this area. The Silver Spur area, Stables, is right halfway in between the two properties. So we've kind of watched the evolution over the years. I started riding in Glendale at a place that no longer exists. It's a parking lot now, but we used to train jumping horses and falling horses for the motion picture business. And we used Allen Street access to the park all the time as part of our training procedure. It's a convenient and easy access to that area of the neighborhoods to the park. The traffic situation is, as had been noted, severe from Disney during the rush hours, so we have to avoid that if we can. Going across Riverside Drive is not too bad, because we've got signals to help us, but I happen to be driving horses, too. I have harness horses, and so I avoid those peak times. But I will say that a part of the ambiance of the neighborhood, that people see that horse and buggy come by, they, brings a smile to their faces and is well-received by everybody. We'd like to preserve that as well as, it's in Glendale as well as in Burbank. It's all part and parcel of the same route we take, and we would like to maintain that and maintain the benefits of the horse property as it exists today. So I strongly urge that you vote against the zone change. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Bill Doyle, followed by Alyssa Nagreen. They both left. All right, well, Nora Walla, Nori Walla, followed by Delon Williams.
Good evening, Mayor Sinanian, members of the Glendale City Council and staff. My name is Nori Walla. I'm a resident of the Burbank Rancho and an eighteen-year customer of the establishments in the commercial equestrian district of Glendale. Thank you for the opportunity to briefly address you. I'm here on the Silver Spur issue, so I'm gonna skip some of the parts that you've already heard. It appears a developer seeking a zone change from commercial equestrian to medium-density residential, which will necessitate a general plan amendment. He wants to demolish Silver Spur to build a multi-family residential development. As you've heard, Silver Spur is under an acre. It's one of five contiguous properties in the commercial equestrian zone on Riverside Drive. The sixth and final commercial equestrian property is located at the end by Betty Davis Park, Riverside Drive, Betty Davis Park, which is conveniently located next to the Betty Davis Estate. Pursuant to your land use element, the commercial equestrian zone has been in place for decades, as you've heard, and it states specifically that it was designed to encourage and support the development of equestrian-related activities for the residents of the community. Based on the land use element, and based in fact, this commercial equestrian district is the infrastructure of your equestrian neighborhood, and not just yours, but ours in Burbank and L.A.'s, because as you saw Emily's map, it's Griffith Park, and it's surrounded Burbank, Glendale, and then Atwater Village. All bridges lead to Griffith Park. There's a reason why the commercial equestrian district is on Riverside Drive, a bridge ride away from Griffith Park, because that's where people exercise their horses. That's where they've always exercised their horses. That's where the movies have been made, of horses running. That's what it's about, and that's why it's there. As an aside, bridge-wise, there are three bridges from Glendale that lead over to the perimeter of the equestrian center, which is Griffith Park. There's one bridge out of Burbank, and because there are so many equestrians, there's a new bridge being built in Atwater. They could have just built one bridge to hold pedestrians and bicyclists, but they added a second bridge. It's actually two bridges. One is for equestrians only. There are over thirteen hundred horses, over thirteen hundred horses in Burbank, Glendale, and Atwater Village. That's why there are now five, there are going to be five bridges. But I regress. It's the infrastructure. The commercial equestrian district is the infrastructure for these equestrian communities. These establishments on Riverside Drive, as I said, it's not just Glendale, but it's Burbank, L.A., and beyond. It's extremely vital that these services stay in place. Demolishing Silver Spur is contrary to your land use element, because your land use element talks about preserving your neighborhoods, and safeguarding your neighborhoods, and protecting your neighborhoods. And the rezoning of Silver Spur does just the opposite. By rezoning Silver Spur from commercial to multifamily residential, this city council will be putting in place a precedent, a precedent that this council, or any other council, will have a very difficult time not adhering to. And why do I bring that up? And I'm gonna talk about the elephant in the room. The elephant in the room is the property next to Silver Spur, which has been for sale for quite some time. And if Silver Spur is rezoned from commercial equestrian to multifamily residential, what's gonna happen to the property next door? Well, if they're gonna seek a rezoning to multifamily residential. And then you have two of the six commercial equestrian properties turned over. Two of the six commercial equestrian properties that serve as the infrastructure for your neighborhood, your equestrian neighborhood, and the other equestrian neighborhoods, gone. Putting in that, in place that precedent with Silver Spur will set in motion a change of events from which there is no return. And do you need to do that? Does this housing need to be built in Glendale? Bill Luddy touched on it a little bit. If you look at your housing element, Chapter Five, your land resources, your land inventory resources, you will see that your general plan states that SCAGS, Regional Housing Needs Assessment, identified a future need of two thousand and seventeen units for the period of two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and twenty-one. Pursuant to that same housing element, Glendale has already identified existing, existing medium-density residential, in a residential zone, a potential of nine-hundred-and-eighty units. Glendale has already identified those units. Glendale has already identified thirty-two-hundred to thirty-three-hundred potential dwelling units, already zoned as residential. And so you don't need twenty-one units in the equestrian district. You don't need to bend over backwards to try and put that in place. You don't need to put in motion the destruction of a neighborhood in order to meet the housing requirements that you already have. So it's not the, it's not the location to set a zoning precedent. It can't be undone, and the cumulative negative impact on this community will be tremendous. Thank you.
Thank you. Delon Williams, not sure if I pronounced that right, followed by Rainham Marotti.
My name is Dallin Williams. I am the owner and operator of L.A. Horse Rentals, which is the property next to Silver Spur. Our barn is right next to Silver Spur. The construction resulting in the, the change there would create an environmental too dangerous in which to conduct our neighboring horse rental business. Not only will this change of land use endanger business, but it will also affect the positive impact that horse community brings to Glendale. For example, at our barn, we have been blessed to watch an autistic child from a bond with our rental horses, and over the years, gain confidence and trust as he learns to ride. Now, we have, I rent horses to public, to people that come and ride to enjoy these trails. And it's not just a business, it's, you know, we get children like this that come, and they ride a horse, and we get their parents that talk to us, and they tell, they tell us that it changes their child, you know, and they leave, and the autistic child gets on there, and it changes them, the way they look at things. It's a bond with the horse. A lot of you may not understand, but y'all are more than welcome to come to my place and try it. And that way, you get an insight look on what all of us folks are talking about and what we're so proud to be a part of. We urge you guys to, we urge you to recognize the positive impact our horse community brings to Glendale. We're not an individual business, but we are an entire community and lifestyle that is being threatened by development. Please vote no to the proposed zone change. Thank you.
Thank you. Rainha Marotti, followed by Joseph Isagullion.
Hi.
Hello.
Good evening. Thank you for taking the time to hear what all of us are saying. I also am here about the Silver Spur zone change. I'm actually speaking on behalf of Melissa Perez. She's the owner of Tricky Tac, which is a neighboring Glendale business to Silver Spur. She was not able to be here tonight due to an illness in the family, but she understands the weight that this zone change has on the equestrian community. Melissa grew up locally in Glendale, owning horses, riding in the Rancho, and shopping at the local Glendale feeds. at the local Glendale feed store that she now owns and operates. The zone change at the Silver Spur property would not only negatively affect her brick-and-mortar tack and feed store, and that's where she provides employment and does business with the Glendale community, but more importantly, the proposed zone change would endanger the entire equestrian community, and she's built her life around supporting that. The impending zone change has the potential to destroy the equestrian neighborhood as it opens the door to a domino effect on the zoning along Riverside Drive. The current commercial equestrian services zoning serves to protect the equestrian community, and a zone change to any one of these properties negates those lawful securities. The Glendale Rancho is a unique neighborhood. It's brimming with tradition. It has an overwhelming sense of community, as you can see here, and we have historical significance. By changing the equestrian zoning to support the development of condominiums, the city of Glendale would in fact be stripping this neighborhood of the very essence and history that is previously dedicated to preserve. Thank you guys so much for your time. I appreciate it, as does Melissa Perez. Thanks.
Thank you. And last speaker is Joseph Isagulian.
My name is Joseph Isagulian. I'm a longtime Glendale resident. Recently, I moved to this address, to 105 East Garfield, and I'm having a parking problem because there's a whole bunch of businesses over there, like car dealers, and they all park, employees, they park their cars on the street, and we don't have a parking space to, I mean, you know, to park. And Garfield is the only street that you cannot get a permit. If you live on Maryland, you live on Windsor, you get a permit, but not on Garfield. Anyway, the last year, I received a ticket, and I paid for it, but recently, I went to register my car. It says that, you know, because you didn't pay for the parking ticket, you know, we're not going to register your car, but I paid for it. The reason, you know, they said, you know, you were late, like a day or so, you know. So just for that, they want to charge me $72 extra. And I've been in an auto hospital. I lost my father recently, and I made my payments. I have the receipt and everything, but they said that I didn't pay for it. And when I go over there, talk to the supervisor, they don't, I cannot talk to the supervisor. I told them I'm going to come to council meeting. They said, "Go ahead, do whatever you want to do." You have to pay. I have a friend that, he received a ticket, and he paid after two months. When he went over there, they didn't charge him $1 extra, but I was late one day. They want to charge me $72 for that one day. Please, you know, if you can, you know, take a look at these papers, see what you can do, please. I paid for it. I have the copies of the tickets and everything. And, you know, the people over there, they don't even want to, you know, they say, "Oh, go talk to them," you know, whoever's taking the payment, they're in Green Bay, Wisconsin. I mean, you know, I don't know what Green Bay, Wisconsin has to do with Glendale. When you call them, you cannot contact them, you cannot contest, I mean, you know, contest the ticket. I did. They never send me an answer. All they do, they just, you know, tell me, "Oh, you owe this much money." I never received any answer from them.
Are those all your comments?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Will you follow up?
Absolutely. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if Mr. Isagulian could leave your number with the clerk, sir, we'll make sure to follow up with you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have no more speaker. Speaker cards. Anything else on the agenda, Mr. Clerk?
New business?
Do you have new business?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the claim of RA Glendale LLC be compromised and resolved for the full and complete amount of $80,939.59, and the same is hereby approved and accepted. And the finance director is authorized to issue a warrant and said some payable to the claimant for delivery by the city attorney upon the execution of a settlement and release agreement.
Do we have a second?
Second.
May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Agajanian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Carpetean.
Najarian.
Yes.
And Mayor Sinanian.
Yes. Anything else on the agenda?
Nope. Adjournment.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And we're adjourned at 8:35 p.m.